Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Recess Subcommittee, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphone when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there's been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the Recess Subcommittee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask Mr Waddell to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would do ask if members could confirm their present when I call their name. Bailey Source.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Flynn?
Yes, present.
Councillor Hunter?
Yeah, present.
Councillor Rome?
Present.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
A good morning, present.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call. Taking on to item one, are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, then it takes you on to item two, which is a report on the Olympia refurbishment programme and your last degree, the recommendations.
So this report discharges the remit from committee to undertake a review of the design and construction of the Olympia building. The review undertaken on behalf of the chief executive covers the design and construction of the Olympia and informs the planned refurbishment and operation of the facility. Part of the report findings draw members' attention to the further recommendation in the court for implementing periodic closures as standard practice for future years' operation and maintenance of the Olympia facility. I understand the concerns that have been raised by the swimming community with this closure of the facility. Accordingly, I'd like to reassure the committee that officers working with the contractor and LCD to bring the Olympia back into operation as soon as possible. Bailey, Keenan firstly, and then Bailey McPherson.
Convener, thanks. Thanks for that. Few questions and obviously I'd like to know what the legal officer is in a position to say publicly in relation to the remit that he had to go and look as to see whether there was any recourse against the developer. And you know, I think the public have the right to know as to whether that is the case and whether there's any case to answer. And I think it would be useful to have an understanding of the recommendations about closure and the maintenance and why that wasn't built in based on the original design, where there would have been a file detailing the building as part of the CDM regs and maintenance regimes and the care of the place that should have been built into that. So why has that never happened? Okay, so we'll take- Comment I would like to make after that.
That's fine. Okay, if we could take Roger first to do with the legal aspect and then presumably Neil or Judy to cover the other question.
Thank you, convener. In answer to Bailey Keenan's question, as elected members will be aware, I have separately given legal advice not just to the members of the Recess Subcommittee but to all members of the council. In accordance with usual practice, that advice being legally privileged, I'm not in a position to explain what the advice was during this public meeting.
Okay, thanks for that, Roger. And then in terms of closure and operations, who wants to pick that up? Judy, would that be yourself?
Thank you, convener. I'll certainly come in at the start but probably ask if Neil could come in with any comments afterwards. In terms of the cleaning regime, I think that the nature of the building at the start, it was expected that there wouldn't be required quite as much maintenance as in the previous Olympia. But I think in terms of the investigations that have gone on in terms of the most recent closure, I think we're all clear that we do need to factor that in as a regular basis and make sure that we can undertake any necessary repairs during that period of closure.
Okay, thanks. I saw Robin has signed up, so I'm not sure if Neil wants to come in. Robin?
Just to repeat the point or to amplify the points that Neil goes to more detail. But it was to say that the new facility was designed in such a way that annual closures were not required. The old Olympia, the complexity and the age of the boiler and the pool plant systems required the annual closure, but the new system was designed in such a way that this was not required. But I asked Mr Martin to come in and give more detail on that.
Thanks, convener. So just touching on Bailey Keenan's point about the CDM regulations, you know, the building was designed and constructed under the CDM regulations, which considers the holistic life of the structure of the building from inception through design, construction and its operational use. And that's, you know, separate from the actual ongoing day-to-day maintenance of the facility. And as Mr Presswood points out, the anticipation wasn't for necessarily having annual closures similar to the previous Olympia. One of the other observations that I would make in terms of carrying out this review is as time passes, knowledge is lost, staff move on, and that happens with all facilities, not just leisure centres, schools, et cetera. And I think there's maybe a bit of that, and from the point of view of the report, I've said that we have to look at having a baseline for going forward. And that's really where the recommendations coming from in terms of having a prudent approach, looking at having more planned closures, whether that be on an absolute annual basis and having other closures forward. And that's to be akin with the day-to-day, weekly, monthly and longer planned maintenance. So essentially having a baseline for a strategy going forward rather than what has necessarily been carried out over the previous 10 years since it's been operational.
Convener? Yes, thanks for that. Do you have any other supplementary?
Well, I mean, I'd kind of like to flesh out a wee bit more of what's been said there because, you know, I think we've got an understanding that what we've had in the building and that it should have been maintained under the CDM regs and there would have been a construction file with all the details in there. And it appears that many things we've let lapse, given that, you know, in the next report, it would be suggesting to me that 58% with air handling, you know, environmental improvements, corrosion, that we've let the building lapse considerably. So, you know, I may be not going to get all the answers flushed out today, but I think it would be worthwhile this report being remitted to scrutiny so as that level of scrutiny can happen, so as we have a clear understanding of where we've let the city down, in my opinion, by no maintaining the building adequately in line with the construction files we'd have received when taking the building over from the developer.
Well, I'm sure in your role as convener of the scrutiny committee, you can advance that request.
Convener, would we agree that today or will we need to advance that differently?
Well, I'm quite relaxed with that going to scrutiny, so I'm sure-
Agreed.
And Robin, you wish to come back, please?
Yeah, Chair, I just wanted to highlight the fact that I believe we're talking at cross purposes. The question was about an annual closure period. Bailey Keenan has highlighted what he perceives as being a lack of maintenance and a failure to comply with the CDM manual. From my perspective, we have invested very considerably in this building and there may be operational advantages in a periodic closure. And I think Mr Martin highlighted that it doesn't require to be annual. But maintenance has taken place on this building. I think last time we met at scrutiny to discuss this, we highlighted that the average spend on the building has been in excess of £200,000 a year. So there's been very significant maintenance has taken place. And there may or may not be an operational advantage for that. We would also discuss that with Judy and her team in terms of what the optimal was. But I do not believe that failure to have an annual closure period means that we've under-invested in the building.
Well, that's a helpful clarification. Thank you.
Convener, if I could come back for clarity on that, you know?
Well, briefly, please.
Okay, you know, I accept there's been money spent on the building, but then there's been another officer that suggested that over time, knowledge has been lost. And that would suggest to me that some of the regimes that may have been there haven't have been carried out. Hence the reason I believe it should go to scrutiny, so as we could have that level of drains up, look at the thing, find out what went wrong, what records have been kept and how it's been maintained. You know, I think that even if there was an opportunity to take the contractor for anything, why wasn't it done at an early stage? I'll leave it at that, seeing as it's going to go to scrutiny.
Right. Don't think that was a real question, anyway. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. It's again back to this issue of periodic closures. Now, I don't want to revisit today the previous discussion at the scrutiny committee regarding the lack of an annual closure period. We've been there. I hear what Bailey Keenan is saying in relation to this report going to scrutiny. I have no problem with that. My question, suppose what I think anyone, and you might argue with the benefit of hindsight, but anyone would now agree that not requiring quite as much maintenance as an officer said a moment ago clearly has proved to be a significant problem. And the lack of a periodic, whether that's annual or whenever it is, a periodic closure period has proven to be a mistake. I think anyone would reasonably agree to that now. And I suppose my question for officers is, in relation to the intention as indicated in 91D and E, that there will be a periodic closure period to ensure that the maintenance is proper and maintained. Can we have an assurance that elected members will be given details of the, shall we say, the detail of that once that is agreed after the refurbishment has taken place? And can officers give some guarantees as to how long the, should we be agreeing to the tender that's in the next item, item three? Can we have some guarantees in terms of the lifespan of these works given that there will henceforth be a periodic closure period? What we don't want to see is that we're back here with the same sort of problems in a few years' time.
Okay, Robin, can you put that out, please?
Yeah, Chair, I'm happy to confirm that we will brief elected members in terms of the chosen periodic closure period, but we also need to take cognizance of feedback from the contractor, the supplier of the specialist equipment and crucially colleagues in LCD to ensure that any closure is optimised in terms of their operational requirements and facilitates joint working and minimises disruption to the customer. So as soon as that's done, as soon as we conclude the works and we have agreed what the approach is with the contractors and with LCD, we will communicate that to members.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Sorry, convener. That's helpful, but can we just have some response in relation to guarantees going forward so that we are comfortable that anything agreed this morning will have longevity around it?
Apologies about that part. Can I ask Mr Martin to handle that?
Yeah, thanks, Robin. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. So obviously, in terms of all construction work, we've got the level of guarantees and making good defects, et cetera. But the process that we've gone through with council officers, external consultants, specialist consultants and the contractor is looking for design solutions that provide that longevity. So in terms of the rectification works, the detailed design, what they're putting in place is with the best endeavours to have that longevity. And from the point of view of short-term, frequent closures or more long-term closures, that would be hopefully for more cyclical replacement, as mentioned in the report, deep cleaning and minor repairs to give that medium-terms certainty. But clearly, nobody can sit here and give an absolute guarantee. But all officers and members of the team that have been involved in this project have been absolutely looking at it with that philosophy in mind to give us that period of continuity that we've obviously not enjoyed today.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, Bailey Wright?
Thank you. I think it should go to scrutiny and if we've taken that decision, I think that's the best decision to make. I remember all the debates that was had when we agreed to build us and I remember distinctly having quite a few arguments with officers about was this the right size, because I didn't think that the size of the pool would be able to fit into the site. I remember bringing up the fact that there was a hidden pond under Eastport House and as the pool was being built below that, every time it rained, the flooding, the water had to go down the hill and would that affect it? And these are some of the questions that I asked. But I really want to know, how did this happen and who's to blame? There are lots of user groups in the city, many of them older people who actually go out once or twice a week in groups of anything up to 10 to go and have their morning swim and then they go and have their lunch at a local cafe and then they go home. And this is about loneliness and isolation as well. But what I really want to know is what options did you consider in bringing this paper to committee? Did you consider other options like would a sale, a developer, sort of partnerships, anything at all, you know? Because I'm looking at the other papers saying the cost to new build as against repairs is probably not an option. My other question is, what's been cut to free up the £8 million mistake?
Can you put your idling questions there? Robin, can you?
Yeah, Chair, I think I'll need to bring in Judy and Neil also to give input into that, particularly Judy around the operational issues around potential different delivery models. But in terms of the issue of who's to blame and what the story is, I think we've covered that significantly in previous reports and at scrutiny committees. So perhaps that may be one that's more important to tease out at scrutiny. But I don't have anything to add to the previous questions that have been answered, I believe. In terms of options, this is very much an asset management approach. So we would not have carried out a full option appraisal because it was not a new build project. It was about maintaining an existing asset. And the committee on 6th December gave us a very clear remit to bring back an approach to refurbish the Olympia. So we haven't done a detailed option appraisal. We clearly could consider other options, but officers would not recommend them. So that might be do nothing, leave a mothballed facility which couldn't be used, et cetera, perhaps the gym. Demolish and do not replace. And I think the voice of the swimming community would very much be heard if that were an option that members wished to ask officers to pursue. And again, I emphasise that officers would not recommend that to you. Demolish and build new, either on that site or on another site. I'll perhaps leave it to Mr Martin to give a view in terms of the costs of these respective options. But we certainly think none of them would recommend best value in terms of our statutory duty to secure best value, given the very significant escalation in construction costs that we've seen over the past six months to a year. So I'll ask Mr Martin to come in first and then maybe ask Judy to talk about any potential role for the private sector because I know Olympia is a very important part of the LCD armour.
Thanks, Robin. Neil?
Thanks, Robin. Thanks, Bailey Wright. So just in terms of construction costs, obviously we're in a significant period of unrest in terms of the economy. But we've done a bit of research and looking back at all the data of various builds and refurbishments. And in rough terms, you can essentially say that the construction costs have multiplied by a factor of three since the Olympia was built. So if you were then looking at replacing the Olympia, you're into a significant figure in excess of £80 million, possibly more than that, getting towards £90 million. So it is a massive amount of money in comparison with looking at the rectification works that were proposed in the report.
Thanks for that. Judy?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey Wright. I don't think, I just want to say that I don't think anybody on this call or within leisure and culture or the council underestimate the impact to clubs and the community on the closure of Olympia. There's a lot of work going on to try and minimise the impact as far as we can, but I don't think anyone would disagree that what's in place is not any replacement at all for Olympia and the impact on clubs, on competitions, on, as you've mentioned, Bailey Wright, the people that go for social reasons as well as health reasons. And I think for the city as a whole, the vision would be to get the Olympia back and reopened as soon as we can and then minimise any future likelihood of anything like this happening again. But certainly from leisure and culture's perspective, the benefits of having Olympia to the city and to attracting visitors to the city are very clear and we wouldn't want to undo any of that.
Yeah, could I make a point on that before you answer the financial one? Because I have a right to ask these questions. I probably wouldn't agree with anything you did, but I wanted to know what you had considered because I think that's a need-to-know question. I think if I had asked more questions or if we as a council had asked more questions when the original plans were agreed to, I mean, I trusted the officers at that time to give me accurate information and I feel quite sad that this has happened. So, you know, I think these questions had to be asked, but I probably wouldn't have agreed to some of them anyway. Sorry, you might want to ask the-
Yeah.
Bailey Wright finished, convener?
Yes.
Yes, okay, apologies. I think from an office perspective, we absolutely endorse members' right to ask all the most probing questions because it is an immensely important facility. We recognise the concern that it has resulted in within the swimming community. I think Bailey Wright goes back to a period in time which predates, I think, my involvement in the council and certainly Mr Martin's involvement in the council. However, the questions I think which Bailey Wright highlighted in her earlier question related predominantly to structural issues. And again, I should emphasise that none of the issues that we're addressing through this current maintenance period are, to the best of my knowledge, structural, so they haven't been caused by the location or the geological conditions underneath the site nor the drainage issues around there, which Bailey Wright has highlighted. So there's no doubt that it was a policy decision to put it there. It was, I'm sure there were very strong arguments for putting it in a town centre location because it brings footfall into the town centre. And so I recognise the decision that was taken by members. Having taken that decision, I don't believe that the site itself poses significant concerns in terms of the functionality. And I think the report sets out very, or sorry, the previous report, the December report, sets out very clearly all of the issues that had arisen and gives an explanation of why they were necessary. I suspect the bulk of those issues would have arisen on an alternative site. Thanks for that. Right, Councillor Flynn and then Councillor Crookshank.
Sorry, the financial question hasn't been asked unless you want to ask. It was, what else has been cut to allow the £8 million? Sorry, it seems to be something.
Thank you, convener. I think some of this comes up under the next report in terms of the funding, but we set aside money in the capital plan that the council agreed in January, recognising this work was coming forward. The, as Mr Martin pointed out earlier on, the costs of work have risen significantly in recent months on account of a combination of factors which I think we'll all be aware of. And we've set out in the report on the tender how the funding can be identified. So happy to go into that more at that point, convener, if that will be helpful.
That would be more appropriate. Okay, Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Can I just say, I welcome the report. It's really quite informative and very helpful in understanding the background to the whole project as I wasn't here at the time, as Bailey Wright was and various others members on the committee were themselves. A reference in 5.1, for example, that was chaired by Councillor McCree back in 2008, when they made the decision to move to Allen Street Car Park. But going forward and not dwelling on the past, we look at the additional work and additional procedures that are going to have to be taken place. Can officers give us an outline whether they feel there's going to be any additional revenue costs in the burden of this?
Robin?
Yeah, I'll start off, convener. And I think to the best of my knowledge that there will not be additional revenue costs, but maybe Mr Martin or Judy want to come in and amplify that?
No, thanks, Councillor Flynn. It's a really interesting question and obviously until we absolutely carry out the strategic work in terms of the operational side, we won't definitively know. But from a component point in the building fabric and services, the anticipation is that it should be similar to what has been in place previously. And then in terms of the operational management, that's something that would obviously come under leisure and culture's remit. But there's an absolute commitment from city development and the council that will work collaboratively on that to come up with the most appropriate and optimum strategy in terms of how that's run, in terms of efficiency and the efficiency from the point of view of leisure and culture. But Judy, you might want to expand further?
Thanks, Neil. Yes, in terms of going forward, leisure and culture is equally committed to working closely with our colleagues in the council and we will be very clear that before the building reopens, we will have all measures in place and recorded measures in place so that we're very clear on operational standards going forward.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for that. Mark, do you want to come back or?
That's fine, that's fine, convener. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Georgia?
Thanks, convener. And forgive me if this question has already been asked, but can the legal officer confirm or otherwise that some of the costs are able to be recovered from the contractor if there was defects in the building itself? Thank you.
Roger, are you able to answer that in a public forum?
Thank you again, convener. No, unfortunately, I'm not in a position to add anything to my previous answer in relation to the legal advice which I've given.
Okay, thanks.
Do we not think that it's, sorry, do we not think that it's in the best interests of the public that we're transparent about these things?
Well, I think there's always a conflict of interest, if you like, in giving legal advice in public.
Conflict of interest, if you like, in giving legal advice in public. So I'm not seeing any further questions on this. For item two, so I'm assuming that's agreed. Well, if we could move on, please.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convena. I'll take you on to item three then, the tender received by head of design and property on Olympia refurbishment. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a tender submitted by Robertson Construction T side, amounting to the sum. Very precise sum of six million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand pounds. One hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three pounds and eight pence. Including allowances and professional fees for the refurbishment and upgrade works at Olympia as outlined in the report. As with our council framework, procured projects, there'll be an opportunity for local contractors and suppliers to be involved in the project. As part of the council's commitment to community wealth being. So, um. Questions firstly, Fraser and then Kevin.
Uh, thanks, Convena. Um, couple of questions really regarding the extent of the. Um, the cost of the the tender. Now, it indicates in four point one. That um the um. It talks about the reflection of the current market in the context of Brexit, war in Ukraine, et cetera. However, this tender has come in some thirty-six percent higher than the than provision in the capital plan. And I would just be grateful if officers could give an indication. As to how much of this is simply uh um the pressures in relation to capital projects. And how much is, if you like, additional work that was not foreseen. In terms of what's required at the Olympia. At the time the capital plan was drawn up, uh or this aspect was drawn up in January twenty twenty-two. And do you have a follow-up question? Uh, but I'll I'll leave it at that just now.
See, Robin, can you cover that, please?
Yeah, uh, and again, I'll ask Neil to cover the detail, but I think I would emphasise that I have never in my entire working career experienced construction industry inflation. And as we have seen over the past year, and I think members will be aware of the the various factors that have contributed to that. And Brexit may well be an issue. The war in in Ukraine certainly is an issue. So it's a very challenging environment. And the experience that we've had here with Olympia in in terms of that percentage increase that Barry McPherson's talked about. If not antipical, there are a very significant number of construction projects. And across the United Kingdom that have seen similar levels of inflation. Or indeed higher levels of inflation from the pre-design estimate, which was. And the 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 indicative range will be brought by two committee in in December. And I've even heard of uh projects which are not similar. And but have a similar range of complex mechanical and electrical installations as Olympia. And we've even heard of projects who go fifty percent uh uh above their original pre-design estimate. So there are very, very significant issues and clearly it has a very significant impact. On the overall capital programme. The next capital programme review, I'm sure members will. Understand the pressures that that will pose and upon it. And Mr Martin, I did discuss this earlier to understand if there were options to reduce. And we we uh very, very broadly categorised the. And the works into two-thirds of resolving existing problems and a third. Preventing problems happening in the, again, by cyclical replacement of machinery, et cetera. And so there would be options to uh to trim that, but obviously that might result in more failures of components in the future. And but can I ask Neil to come in and give us a bit more information?
Yep, Neil, please.
Apologies. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. So so in terms of the uh the the difference in costs. Um, members will be aware that the previous report we spoke about was still undertaking surveys. So the full scope of the work wasn't entirely known at that time and as Robin just pointed out. And and in terms of making that assessment to give us the longevity. Part part of that is finalising the scope of the works, but the fundamental points are. Uh, as as we speak about in terms of in relation to. Uh, the overall construction industry and where we are. And I think I think it's fair to say that the. You know, it it is affecting everything uh in in life as well as construction. So. The the market floor says the overall economic climate of of heavily influenced the uh the the price and levels that have been. Achieved late last year in comparison to where we are now for 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 the reasons that we've just spoken about. And the volatility, uh the volatility is part of that. And that then takes on, well, scarce resources. And across the sector, the the general labour resource are scarce, whether it's. To do with raw material provision, component manufacturing. Or as part of the uh onsite implementation. And um this shortage of human resource. Has over previous months been highlighted. But I would emphasise that I think that's become an increasingly problem for the industry and likely to continue. So we're very much uh hitting that. And combined with that, um obviously leisure centres are a bit of a specialist nature than. Part of mainstream construction. So we're then uh concentrating and focusing on. Uh, a sm- a small part of the market, which has obviously got a finite resource and we're looking at pulling on that. And for the demands that we require for this project. So I think when you take all these mitigating factors in, that's that's really how we we've we've got. What are where we've got the cost just now in comparison with where we were in December.
Thanks, Neil. Please read this. Thank you.
I do. I I I would make one comment. I'm grateful to both Mr Presswood, Mr Martin Ford, their responses. If there's one glaringly obvious thing that comes from that, and I think Mr Presswood actually touched on it. There is a need, and I know the chief executive has given members an assurance in this regard for an urgent review of the the whole capital plan. Because we've got a capital plan based on frankly pricing that no longer exists and 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 a need. For reviewing uh the the detail of the the capital plan is obviously urgently required over and above, you know, the the particular issue we're discussing. This morning. My supplementary question is really about transparency in relation to um tendering. And I know that the Places for People procurement hub framework was used for this. But I think you need to really see what's presented to committee today and indeed to the public. Uh, in the context that frankly we have today. A contractor um who um um and a cost nearly six point two million. And no indication in our transparent sense. And of a competitive tendering situation. And I suppose the reassurance I'm looking for is that use of this um um framework. Is actually giving us a guarantee of public uh public money. Uh, being, uh, you know, a value for money basically more than anything else. And I I just feel that that basically what we've got today is a take it or leave it type situation. Uh, for elected members. There's no indication of other bids. And other um uh can potential contractors that could have come in. And I'd just really like some assurances that we are definitely getting the best value for money. Bearing in mind, as I say, this is thirty-six percent more expensive than is in the capital plan. And it's a very significant sum of the council taxpayers' money at six point two million.
Thanks. Neil, can you respond, please?
Yeah, thanks, Convena. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, in terms of the People for Places framework, uh the the principles are very similar and members will be aware that we use scape frameworks and we've used Hubco and. Scottish Procurement Alliance and they do work on similar principles. So to ensure that um everything's competitively tendered. The framework contractor, in this case Robertson Construction, to be the 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 main lead. They competitively tender all their front-end costs, so their site staff, uh huts, et cetera, their time-related. Um. Uh, operations to be the framework contractor as well as a quality presentation to show the infrastructure that they can provide over. Uh, the 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 whole of Scotland. So that element is competitively tendered. Then every substantive work package, whether it's. Groundworks, drainage, painter, work floor, finishes, what have you, that all goes out to the market. So that's competitively tendered with the supply chain, whether it's subcontractors. Manufacturers and suppliers. So each and every element of the work is actually. Tendered. So there's competitive tension, whether it's this framework or some of the others. And that's that that's basically the principles on how. Uh, the council are able to achieve. Uh, best value and discharge their statutory duty. And I think the other fundamental point is. Uh, for this, that that's done on an open book basis. So officers work hand in hand with the main contractor. To uh see what work packages come back. The level of pricing, the diligence in terms of uh the quality assessments that they're looking for. And importantly, as uh Bailey Mc- uh Sawyer's mentioned in uh the opening. In terms of looking at community wealth and supporting the the local subcontractors and utilising them. That gives us a lot of flexibility within that as well.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, Kevin, I think you were next.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, given the um the time scale for the work to be carried out. How and and obviously the mention there of HR being a particular issue because we've seen that in sites. Started in two thousand and seven in the city, seventeen in the city and still no finished yet in housing. Uh, the. What, how confident are we that we'll deliver this on budget, on time? Uh, you know, without any sort of cost overruns?
Um, you want to pick that one up? Neil? Robin?
I'm happy to kick off, uh if that's okay. Thanks, uh Bailey Keenan. So in terms of the HR angle, yeah. Quite rightly, it's a challenge and just as I've uh mentioned to Bailey McPherson. Part of the tendering process is looking at checks in terms of subcontractors and suppliers' financial standing. Their robustness in the marketplace, their business risk resilience in terms of. Uh, being able to deliver. Now, that doesn't necessarily give us any guarantees within this. Uh, uncertain times, but that can reassure members that that assessment has been made. To to give us that continuity as. As much as we can guarantee to uh get us on site. Progress the works and uh deliver based on the design and specification as as it stands. Um, and and in terms of the programme, obviously it is a significant period of time. But uh that the reassurance it can give members is that we will be looking to. Uh, mitigate that and if at all possible, uh improve on that if the opportunity arises. So in in terms of delivering on time and budget, as the project progresses, the risks. Uh, diminish, but every, I can assure you that everything's been done to get us in the position we are. As with every project, to start uh with as much detail and robust quality and cost information as possible. And we'll progress on that basis.
Can can do that? Another question as well, though, I I didn't get the, did we believe there'd be any cost overruns, but. The the other question would be in relation to five point uh three in the report and obviously the various breakdowns in percentage. You know, when it mentions air handling, environment, uh. Uh, improvements in corrosion and and my guess is that's over three million. Uh, water ingress and remedial works at about a million and a half. And then we have this thin-walled carbon pipe. I'm wondering if officers could provide a breakdown. Of these costs perhaps separately. And maybe give me some detail in relation to the thin-walled carbon pipe and how long that's been causing the problem at Olympia. Given that it has been for quite a number of years in Dundee House.
You want to respond to this one?
Chair, I want to pick up. Um, the, we we're more than happy to provide a breakdown um. Of of the cost and you highlighted against those themes. Uh, in terms of the thin-walled carbon steel, I I I spoke earlier about. And the amount of stuff which is resolving existing problems and the amount which is looking forward to prevent. And future component, future closures because of component failure. And and it's my belief that the thin-walled carbon steel probably fits into that bracket. I'm not aware. But Mr Martin may um correct me that there have been substantive issues around thin-walled carbon steel. And but even if not, our recommendation as officers would be that we should replace it now. To avoid the kind of situation that we've seen in 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 Dundee House, but. And Neil, hand over to you and feel free to to correct me if my understanding is wrong.
Thanks, thanks, Bailey. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So in terms of thin-walled carbon, uh uh Robin's quite right, that there hasn't been any performance issues to date and there's. There isn't the evidence that there's any failures occurring. Uh, but in terms of a precautionary me- measure. And to avoid any closure that we've spoken about earlier in in the meeting. It's prudent to carry out the works at this stage. And it gives us that economy to scale because they're on site anyway and clearly uh. Um, take the mitigates that risk of having a further closure to manage that issue uh at a future date down the road.
Can, can, thanks for that.
Can I maybe ask another question in relation to that? It may be useful for officers to do some comparison then to this. To a thin-walled carbon pipe. System that's held up as opposed to Dundee House one to see if there's any uh things there that's went on in the design. Uh, but I'm, you know, I'm hoping that for the engineers that we've got in the city, that's the type of thing they would be doing. No looking to stand in the way of of the the couple of hundred thousand because it, you know, in the grand scheme of things. You know, I don't want to see another closure as as others have mentioned.
Okay, thanks for this comment. Um. But I'm not seeing any other questions, so I'm taking it item three is agreed. Please, move on, please.
Okay, thanks very much. Item four then, before his tender received by head of design and property. And again, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a tender submitted by Robertson Construction T side, amounting to three million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Five hundred pounds and thirty-seven pence. Including allowances and professional fees for the construction of a you, you young person's home. New facility will provide a modern living facility for children, young adults comprising a shared living space. Home sweet bedrooms, dining room, divvies room, kitchen and accommodation for staff. New provision will replace the existing Fairburn House facility. Um. So, Kevin?
Uh, thanks. Uh, just just really looking to know why we've only got one tender and, you know, whether. There was others asked to tender for it and how we're only down to one. You know, it seems like a Hobson's choice.
Neil, can you pick it up, please?
Thanks, thanks, Bailey Keenan. Uh, it's similar to what we're uh was outlining earlier about using utilizing a framework uh. Contract and obviously in this case we've got two. Frameworks of similar at the same committee meeting. Um, but but this is somewhat of what we've done on the flood defences with McLaughlin Harvey. Uh, what we did with the Regional Performance Centre with Balfour BT. And it it is a a a method of procurement that's utilized across. All sectors and particularly uh local authorities. And it allows us to to uh get that buildability and expertise and collaborate with the designers. Uh, to produce an efficient design and then go out and get it fully market tested. So that's really the philosophy. Behind it and hence why bringing this report to you today has got one contractor on it. Rather than going down the more conventional route where you would maybe go out with a. Traditional tender to potentially four or five. Uh, contractors. And I think the other point as well that's worth making is that in this current market conditions. If we were to uh design and put contract documentation out on a a traditional method. We may not get any contractors that would be willing to price on that basis. So there's there's a balance in terms of. Which uh procurement route we utilise at an appropriate point in time. To uh come back and give us the most uh efficient uh way of of delivering a project.
Thanks, Neil. Kevin, you got a supplementary?
No, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, right, I've got uh councillor Koochank and then councillor Hunter. So, Georgia?
Uh, thanks, Convena. Uh, the first part of my question's been answered and that was about uh why there was only one contractor. But I was wondering, um, why this is coming to the recess subcommittee? When it could well have been heard at the main committee that we had just last Monday. And. I mean, I I welcome the project and it was agreed at committee. And I'm just wondering why, you know, it's ending up in the recess subcommittee when. You know, maybe it was there, it could have been heard. At the previous committee. Thank you.
Neil?
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, councillor Koochanks. So the 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 plan was very much to have the information available. To bring it to the conventional city development committee. And just with uh some of the points that have been raised in terms. And just with some of the points that have been raised in terms of the markets and delays and getting all the supplier and subcontractor information back, pulling all that together, it was clear that we weren't going to be able to have the finalised costs and take the appropriate time to scrutinise the costs and for officers to be satisfied that the numbers were appropriate for that project. So the reality was we just weren't able to hit those dates, hence why we've managed to bring it to this committee a week later. And I think the other point that's worth emphasising is that, again, in terms of the volatility of the market, it's very difficult for contractors to hold their price for a long period of time. As Bailey Keenan pointed out, under a traditional tender where we maybe get four or five contractors back. In previous years, we would expect a contractor to be able to hold their price for ninety days. And in the current markets, contractors are struggling to get suppliers to be able to hold their price for seven to ten days. So it's very much that we'll have to get all the prices back once they're finalised and then get it approved as quickly as possible to actually capture that fixed price at a point in time where the market is stable for such a short space.
Thank you.
Okay, and George, please?
Yeah, Kevina, I think the points that Mr Martin there are really valid. I think it's really important that that's been discussed because actually, yes, it's important, I think, that we get this tender and this project done as quickly as possible because it's quite an exciting project, I think. And I think for all the discussions we've had today, I think we shouldn't also lose sight of the fact where this is quite a positive development as well for our young people, in particular our care experienced young people. So really welcome this tender coming to committee and hopefully we can get this done as soon as possible for those young people. I think that's really an important thing, but I think the questions that have been asked have been really relevant and actually I think help inform the reason why it's the day of the recess sub, so that we can get this project moving. So really just want to welcome this tender and I look forward to seeing this project completed.
Thank you very much for these positive comments. I'm not seeing any other questions, so I'm assuming that item is agreed. And that is the end of our recess subcommittee, so thank you all for your attendance.
See yous later.
The recess. Bye.
Thanks everyone.